All right, all right, all right. Peace y'all. We're back with another interview for this year's extremely important election cycle. This time, we're gonna go back to District Three. We have Baba Afalabi. He is gonna be coming on to tell us more about what he's doing, why he's working so hard, and he is working hard, I have to say. I've seen more of his posters out around town than I've seen any other candidate. And not that that is the end all be all, but it does show you who is out there engaging with the businesses and making it happen. So, no further ado, I'm gonna bring up Baba to the stage. Baba, welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming on.
Thank you.
And these interviews have been going really well. Thousands of people are watching them. They're learning more about our candidates and their pets and all the things they have to share with their neighbors. So, I'm gonna give you a quick thirty seconds to introduce yourself, not a stump speech, we got that at the end. But give your name, where you from, what did you do, and then I'll get to the first question.
Thank you for that, Seneca. I really appreciate you having me on here. My name is Baba Afalabi. I'm a twenty-six years resident of Oakland, particularly District Three. I'm a student of Lenny College. I went to Castay, Iowa to study criminal justice. I have an MBA in organization leadership and business. I've built about three, four businesses in the last ten, eleven years. I am in about eighty people. So, I really understand where we are in terms of the city because I'm every day on the ground like my team.
I gotta cut you off. That's a stump speech, but it's okay. I don't, that means you're doing it. Look, make me do my job. Your job is to get your information to the people, so I don't have, I don't hold fault to you.
Absolutely.
But I wanna keep it a level playing field and try to get people the same amount of time. And then, you know, if you save some time, you'll have more time at the end. So, the quicker you answer these questions, not that I want you to rush, the more time we'll have to talk about whatever it is that's on, that's on your mind. All right, question number one. Name a policy passed in the last eight years by City Council. Something City Council did in the last eight years that you agree that there's a legitimate problem to address, but you do not like the way that they addressed it and the policy they passed. You have seven minutes. I will give you this at five. I will give you this at two, and this means stop. And go.
Okay, one of it is the progressive tax that was passed, I believe, a couple of years ago. For me, when you look at the, which was a tax on, on big businesses, like they said. One of the misstep of that is Oakland does not have enough big business to tax to begin with because over ninety percent of Oakland businesses are small businesses, right? And when that was done, from what I read, that was supposed to bring in between seventeen to thirty-two million dollars. I believe he has brought in about twenty million dollars, if I'm correct on what I read. Here's the, here's the biggest issue with that, with that particular policy. When you taxing big businesses, you have to understand that the smaller business also need to get some, something back from that. So, that old fund was spent on homeless services, which has fully supported that we need to. But you cannot take money from businesses and don't understand that the small businesses, particularly given the time that we're coming out of pandemic, does not deserve some, some, you know, investment in. Because I would tell you as a small business owner, large population of the people that are homeless today work for one or two small businesses. I always put it this way, people will walk two, three jobs to have a roof over their head. But when small businesses start closing down, one job, two jobs, they are, they are now done with one job, which is not enough to live in Oakland. I don't condone people working hard, but I think every man and woman in this city will, just out of dignity and pride, they would rather work two, three jobs to have a roof over their head and have no job at all. So, when we make this kind of policy, we have to think about it holistically and see that if I'm taking from Peter to Rob, you know, to, 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 to give to Paul, I need to ensure that Peter, brothers and sisters are taken care of as well. And that's what is happening because when they took this money from the so-called big business that we don't even have enough of, make our economy robust, not trickle down to small businesses. And I believe the way they could have done that is saying, every small business is the higher on house individuals. We can help you, give you some level of grant from this money. Maybe ten percent is allocated, maybe fifteen percent is allocated, but nothing was talked about. All they say is, oh, small business is gonna get a tax credit, but no, I'm a small business. I don't get any tax credit. When my, when my company make a million dollars, I have to pay ten point two five percent of that to, through sales tax. So, we need to understand how that really affects small businesses. I didn't, I, I'm not saying that this big business don't mind, but also the big businesses are not getting what they paying for. Come to talk about our safety, you know, we just heard Clorox and Kaiser, you know, have to fund ten million dollars to bring security to their forefront.
You don't have ten million dollars, huh? You don't have ten million dollars, Baba?
Yeah, I wish I do. So, they have to fund their own security because it's gotten so bad. So, these are the ways that I believe that we need to understand when we're making policy, how does it affect the ecosystem? And we cannot just be one-sided and don't understand how we affect the ecosystem. And I think that's what Oakland is struggling for. You have a lot of people that never really even manage that. They never really hire people and pay income tax or whatnot, so they don't understand what dollar and cents.
They've never read a profit and loss.
Yes.
So, they've never signed, they've never signed checks on the front. Is that what you're saying?
Yes, that's what I'm saying. So, so for me, it's really understanding that if we're doing all this type of policy, how does it affect the ecosystem and making sure that we create a balance overall?
Okay, so with the three minutes we have left.
That's definitely me on that.
No, that's great because I have some questions. So, the progressive business tax is what you're talking about, correct?
Yes.
Okay, and did I hear you correctly when you said you hired and responsible for over eighty people? And you got, you have a, you have an MBA.
Oh, yeah.
So, you actually, and do you have any, any area of focus in municipal finance? Or was it more just for regular business-type stuff?
I think, I think for me is because when you look at our revenue generator, you know, and I think I wrote an essay about that on my LinkedIn and my IG about how small businesses actually fund their money through the system. You know, like I was just on, on a panel with the incumbent that actually feel the need to tell me that property tax is the only thing that run the economy, and that to me was alarming. That means you don't understand the ecosystem.
Oh, no, they don't.
All the people that are on the hills or flatland, they all have businesses in downtown, right? And you have to understand the employee work for those businesses, so they able to pay rent. If you don't pay rent, there's no, you're not gonna be able to pay your property tax, right? And those that own businesses that live on the hills, they also need their business to function so that they can pay their property tax. So, everything is intertwined. So, when I hear official don't get the, understand that small businesses truly the backbone of this city, it's alarming. So, we cannot have those type of representative representing us. It's just that simple.
I agree with that. So, we have a little bit of time left, so I'm gonna try to sneak one more question in, but I'm gonna do it at the back end of the next question, so we can have a more, I guess, consolidated concession that's not like hopping around or anything. So, the next question is a simple but very important one. Section two eighteen of Oakland City Charter prevents City Council members from talking to anyone except the mayor's office and the city administrator's office, except for the purpose of inquiry. What that means and layman's terms, for those of you who are listening, you can ask them questions all day long, but you cannot give them direction. And so, that means you have to work with different people to get the stuff done. How do you plan to navigate section two eighteen? And how do you plan to work in the city to make sure that you can deliver the things that you're gonna be promising us in this stump speech? And what you've been telling people all around the city, you're gonna do for us to get our vote? How do you plan on delivering on those promises if you cannot say, hey, clean that up, Public Works? Why aren't you cleaning that up? You can ask them why you're not, why are you not cleaning that up, but you can't say, I need you to clean that up. Just like that, you violate the section two eighteen, and you can be removed from office and charged with a criminal offense. So, it's a very, very serious section I wish more people spoke about. So, you have seven, four minutes to answer this question. You do not have to take that long. It could be a lot shorter, and then we'll get to the next one. And go.
I think it will be, it will be short. I mean, it's, 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 it's a book of, it's a law of the land, so everybody have to play by that. I think one of the thing that I've been telling people when I converse or when I have engagement is to say, one of the beauty about being a City Council is you have relationship with everybody. You kinda act as the middleman, right? You are a liaison of the, of the community. So, if you have relationship with the community, you know what they want. And then you're able to deliver that to the city through the administrator or the mayor, right? Because at the end of the day, if things fall short of happening, yes, the City Council is gonna get a brunt of it, but the larger person that's gonna get it is the mayor. So, having a good relationship with those two department, the, 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 the mayor and the administrator is key to get to the city, different departments. And I believe that one of the, again, I'm not a, I never worked for the city before, and I think that's why my candidacy is so important because I'm, I don't speak the buzzwords. I don't know them and I don't care for them. I speak layman term. How things affect me as a father, how it affect me as a business owner, how it affect me as a, as a, as a black man in, in Oakland. So, I'm able to speak to that. So, I think as a City Council, you have to know your biggest asset is your relationship with the community, with the mayor office and the administrator, and the Oakland city workforce itself. Because when you come into the office, you see these people every day, all to the security at the door. If they see you to be approachable, friendly, a lot of them will be able to work with you in, in, in unity. So, it's very important. I think that's probably what we're missing because I was just talking to someone earlier about how we all, we all did not pay attention to what was happening four years ago, right? Because.
Well, I don't, I don't know about us all. I was paying attention.
No, I think you are because I do, I do saw some of the debate you do. I think a lot of, because it was in the mix of that pandemic and every, everything, right? Twenty twenty and twenty twenty-two came back, and we all trying to recover from that. So, that's what I meant by a lot of people are distracted.
I would just mess it with you. Yes, voters were just, I mean, everybody was in shock and people were dealing with, you know, all, everything you just said. I, I agree with you.
Exactly. So, because of that, when, when I peel back and look at the City Council member and I'm like, okay, what's going on here? And I start seeing that, you know, when you look at people background and you look at what they've done or what they're doing and seeing how things are now moving, and it boils down to having a good relationship. When you have people that are, you know, don't know what their role should be or how to go about their role strategy. I have an MBA in, in, in business, in, in organization leadership and strategy. You have to understand your objective and how to, your objective is, and your objective come from your constituent, the, the, the community. And getting that done is your ultimate goal, not your personal agenda, not because, oh, I wanna stick it to Seneca for now, agreeing with me. No, it's saying they want this thing to be done, the road to be paved or there's something to be cleaned. You have to figure out a strategic way to get the mayor on your side, to get the administrator on your side, so that they can liaise for you, they can represent you in front of the, this different department in the city to get your message across. I think it's very key important to know that, to know that your whole, your power is that relationship you have. And I think that's what I'm gonna be able to bring to City Hall.
And so, we have three minutes left here, so I wanna add that time to your next question because this is the big one. But before that, I have a few things I wanted to say as I introduced this question that Oakland is in a crisis. And what will your area of focus be? I think I can probably guess. But, and how do you plan to use your vote to reform Oakland? Now, this is a leading question because you will have to agree that Oakland needs to be reformation. I think that we are aligning that, so I don't feel uncomfortable with asking you that question. But I wanna acknowledge that it is not a neutral question. It is, it is, you know, basically saying that we're not on the up and up, we're not doing what we need to do.
No.
That's my, okay, so, that being said, I have always said in many of my previous stump speeches when I run for public office, which I'm not doing this year and probably never will again. And when I'm talking to clients for my, my company around town, I'm not gonna self-promote, so I won't say the name. I always talk about cities and commerce. So, you, are you an immigrant, Baba?
Yeah, I'm an, oh, yeah, I'm an immigrant, second generation.
What country are you from?
Nigeria.
Okay, so Nigeria as a country, which is many countries, which had many cities, the day ancient, that goes back and back and back. And, and I'll ask you if you agree with me or disagree with me here. Every city is only formed for one reason, a city, and that's commerce, that's business.
Absolutely.
Okay, and so the city's job is to protect commerce and to educate the next generation of competitive workers.
Yeah.
And to make sure that you stay innovative and that you, again, protect commerce.
Yes.
It's also the only place where working people can have any economic mobility.
Yes.
You being an entrepreneur, you are a living embodiment of someone who's coming not to be an employee, but an employer and put their, their, their ideas that you have, which are, I don't know, you said four or five businesses?
Yep.
That you started?
Yep, that I've started.
That's a lot of ideas, right? That's a lot of ideas. And if there's no city, you can't do that.
Yeah.
Um, no, go ahead, go ahead, jump in.
And if I can jump in right quick, I was talking to a friend two to three weeks ago, and I said, look, look back because I came in, I bought, I came into Oakland in ninety-eight, ninety-nine, and I, you know, I was focusing on school, but I started really paying attention to downtown Oakland in two thousand and three, two thousand and five. I was a night bar manager for Air Lounge in Old Oakland, you know.
I used to go there.
Exactly, so we created a lot.
The one downstairs, yeah, that was my, that was my joy.
Yeah, so we created, we created, we created a lot of community during that because a lot of people were turning twenty-one, you know, people were coming around, you know, and there was nowhere to go, but it was a safe space for especially black and brown folks. I mean, everybody came down there, but particularly black and brown folks, that was the spot for them. And for me, it's understanding that if you do not take care of your businesses, I mean, you done deal. And that's what we're saying. And for me to have, and I think one of the, like you pointed out, one of the reason why I'm running is when I look back to Oakland District Three, I say, why do we have somebody that doesn't prioritize small business? Again, I'm not saying business is end all be all, but it is the ripple effect. It's because, think about it, if you're gonna take care of the homelessness, you're gonna talk about money.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, nonprofit are meant to run without making money, but they need money to be run, right? So, if you're gonna talk about security, you're gonna talk about payment, paying money, right? If you're gonna talk about fire department, you're gonna talk about money. So, everything at the end of the day hinge on finance, and who brings in that finance? It's small businesses.
Businesses, small, what percentage, what percentage of Oakland's tax, business tax revenue comes from small businesses? I don't know. Do you know?
I believe it's probably about twenty-four percent, I wanna say. It might be even more. Here's, here's, I just wrote a piece, an essay on that, like how, you know, property tax and small businesses, how they actually drive Oakland, because the thing is, all those properties you see are businesses, okay?
So, they don't get counted together? So, the small, the small part is from?
It's different, so there's a realist.
But they are small businesses, small part, I agree with you, yeah.
Exactly. So, again, that's when a incumbent say that, I'm like, okay, this is a problem because our view is very important, you know? You can only see as far as your mind goes, right? So, if you can't see Oakland as the way it should be, the, what I'm bringing is the possibility because I'm an international person, you know, I grew up, born and raised in Lagos, Nigeria, which is one of the biggest metropolitan city in Africa. I, Tokyo, Japan is one of my favorite, I call it my adopted hometown, like I love Tokyo, Japan. I go there when I used to travel, I go there five years straight, so I love Tokyo, New York, all of these things. When you look at some point in time, those big cities have challenges and they able to come back from that because they pay attention to their commerce, okay? So, for me, that's what I bring in and saying, look, I'm looking ten, fifteen years, and I'm looking at my friends that started businesses and struggled and have to let it go because Oakland did not help, Oakland did not create an avenue or a conducive environment for them to flourish. I have friends that have moved to Portugal, I have friends that have moved to LA, I have friends that have moved to Miami or New York because they just couldn't take it. And when you look at everything that we've created, it's not because the business model is bad, it's because the environment where he doesn't support us. I'll give you a prime example. My last business was mushing, a, a, a very nice, you know, upscale, so to speak, sport bar that a lot of people enjoy. It was a community for a lot of us, right? We struggle not because our business model was poor, we struggle because every single, I would say maybe three out of ten or four out of ten customers that come get their car broken into, right? So, that happened so much that even my personal friends would text me two, three months and say, Baba, sorry, I haven't come through. Like the last time my car got broken into, my wife was upset with me, you know? So, this start affecting families, or you have people that usually bring their kids to downtown or, or hang around. I still bring my kids out, but.
Not, not right now.
Exactly, but people are afraid because of what may happen. If they, if the, if the man, if the father is not afraid, the mothers are, you know? So, these are the things we have to start thinking about how these little, little things affect the general population, right? And I hate to say it because I've heard our incumbent somehow say, this is a lumen doom, like it's happening. Uh, uh, one of my, one of my favorite, not even one, the only Africans and Caribbean's food market that we have in, in, in Old Oakland, in District Three, got, got broken into a few weeks ago.
I'll be interviewing her and her husband Friday. So, you were telling me about the business struggle, but let's use this moment to pivot just a little bit. Let's get serious here for a minute. When it comes to winning elections, you need three, two or three things. Money, name recognition, and endorsement. When you don't have at least two, it gets hard to win. Not impossible, but difficult. And you are sort of a, how do I call it, a spoiler candidate?
Yep, I'm, yep, I am. I'm glad you know that.
Yeah, no, no, you're a spoiler. And it's because of, here's the thing, there's a difference between power earned and power given. And so, when you have people who haven't, and I'm not saying the agenda's a bad one, I have an agenda, right? And I'm pretty transparent about my agenda. I'm trying to recall a mayor, and I'm trying to get people elected who are pro-commerce, pro-business, and pro-public safety, and actually care about our elders and our babies. I'm transparent in my agenda, and, and I could be pretty aggressive to employer, but this is more about you than me. So, let's talk about you. That's what people hear. I got my own show. I talk about me all the time, but check it out. Oakland right now, you are, you coming in to spoil the party, and now you're fortunate it's to be a three-way race, it appears, when before people thought it was gonna be a two-way race. But the only thing that's gonna be able to pull you over, in my opinion, is if you're really clear to the voter about what you're gonna do different, and you're willing to call out, not that you have to be disparaging or negative, but you can point out exactly what went wrong. And so, what I want you to talk about, and you got, you know, at least five minutes to go in on this, is right now, we have the possibility of having an incumbent elected again. What, why did you decide to run? Um, why are you working so hard to, you know, you have to overcome some pretty big odds here. I'm not, again, it's not impossible, and you have effectively made it a three-way race, in my opinion. Um, not that I'm anyone special, but you know, people do listen to what I say for whatever reason. So, um, you, again, what don't you like about what's going on right now?
So.
What is, what are you really gonna do? What are you really gonna do different, man? Like, we hear it all the time. What are you gonna do different? Not no, I'm gonna be safe for city and, do you know, I'm not saying you talk like that. You've actually been very deliberate and detailed about what you don't like about the business policy, and I appreciate that. Anyway, take the floor as yours, brother. Talk to the people who wanna hear some fire because what I hear from the people who are talking is this is the most boring, anemic, playing it safe election they've ever seen, and nobody wants to really say anything that's risky. And I think it's because of that rank choice voting crap that I don't like, that forces people to have to play nice with everybody. But for right now, you didn't gotta play nice with no one. Why are we voting for you? Earn our vote. You got the rest of the floor. It's yours. Your website is up here. Take five minutes. Tell us, what are you really gonna do for us, brother? I'm listening.
Okay, so.
I live, I live in this district. I live here.
Yeah, so like, just like mine, and it's a requirement to do so, and I've been living here for so long. So, I know this district like back of my hand, you know? So, for me, I think the reason why, I'll, I'll go back to just seeing, as a business owner, like I said, I've built in the last eleven years, I've built three. And every single one of them at some point meet the city's inadequacy. I'll give you a private example. When I was, you know the cathedral building on the corner of sixteen and between Telegraph and Broadway? It's the, it's the white cathedral building. Yeah, I can't hear you.
I'm sorry. I muted myself to give you the floor because I don't wanna interrupt you, but the triangle one, the triangle one.
Yeah, so.
Pete was there, Pete Coffee was there.
Yeah, Pete Coffee was there before he changed hands. So, before Pete Coffee was there, myself and my, and my friend Alana, we activated that building from the back of Occupy Wall Street, Occupy Oakland, all that two thousand and eleven stuff. So, we occupied that by going to the landlord and saying, look, this place is empty. She did actually, and she called me on board, and we activated that. From then on, right after us is when Pete Coffee came there. So, these are the impact that my creativity have done, okay? Uh, the space that, what do you call it, uh, uh, where we just have a forum, King Focus, that as right now. I have a friend.
Right across from State Street, that got closed, it's just closed down.
Yes, yes, they closed down. Right there, one of my friend, Michael Orange, before all this first Friday becomes first Friday. Exactly, yeah, exactly. So, we used to do it, we used to curate over there. I would come there and do my clothing and, you know, I have, we have a friend called Cali, and they would do all this painting and curate. So, I'm saying this to say, I have been on the ground, I've been doing the work. So, going, you know, going to the office would just be me connecting from the streets to the City Hall. I will be the connector. I'm not somebody coming from a office, you know, I didn't, I'd never run.
How you gonna put all these businesses on hold? You got, are your children ready to take the reins from you or something? Are they, are they adults? Are you passionate on? Are you planning on juggling multiple businesses and doing a full-time job of being a councilman?
I think, let me, let me give you my background. When I was in, in two thousand and eight, when I was in grad school, I was working for IKEA full-time, working in Palo Alto, driving every day to Palo Alto, and my grad school was in John, was John F. Kennedy in Pleasant Hill. And I was managing a nightclub, Hair Lounge at that time, and I started a business called Suru at the same time. And I did that for two, three, four years. I worked in IKEA for six years. So, all of these I'm not new to. Um, some of my friends always say they think I have a shock absorber, so.
Yeah, do you have a twin? You guys working together? This is a, do you have a twin? Are you working together?
No, it's just me.
You know, Nigeria's job, you're headed to pet game, y'all. Did Nigeria figure out cloning, and y'all didn't tell us because you know, y'all real smart over there. They are absolutely blown in the way in the global economy right now.
I'm glad you pointed that out. So, as an Nigeria, one thing we know is how to hustle and hustle hard, also smart. I think we are blessed with the street knowledge and the academic knowledge, and that's what I provide. I can present to you how the city of Oakland should be, you know, and as a, you know, it's, the way it should function. I'm blessed with that capability, and I have the friendship, I have the, the, the ability. You can, like, I smile a lot because there's no reason to frown. It's really hard to, to be enemy with somebody because I understand we all have a need, and I'm gonna be able to listen to that. So, going back, what I bring to the City Hall is really coming from the street, understanding, I've been a small landlord before. I've been an employer, which if you look at the last, you know, City Council we've had, they cannot boast that, okay? So, I am somebody that have always been on the street. So, you were talking about, you know, raising money and, and, and endorsement. I just had a meeting where I said, you know what, I purposely do not wanna do this. I could have been going to friends that are business owners and say, hey, endorse me, and I'm like, no. Your work should speak for you. One of the thing, I have friends of mine that came to me, why are you running against this person? I'm not running against anybody. It's four years. It's a democratic process. Every four years, we have the choice to run, and what I asked them is that person that's in the office. And what I asked them is that person that's in the office, that's the incumbent, do you know them before they're in office? They said, no. So do you know me? Ten years, fifteen years, I'm talking. So if you can know me and you can speak to my character, why can't you trust, you know, why can't you believe that I am actually better and and trust me, twice that is happened. They backed up, they were like, you know what, you're right. You're right. You've been in on the ground. I've been part of, in the black. I've been part of this first fight that we know today. I've been activating spaces in downtown. Listen, I'm not saying that I have it all the answers, but as an entrepreneur, what I can do is create opportunity in a creative way to maximize what we need to do. And and one of the reason why a lot of people are not investing in Oakland is because they don't trust what we currently have. So when you have somebody like me that they know that I've already invested my money, I've lost and I'm still betting. I just signed a one point four million dollars uh 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 lease two, two, two months ago. So win or lose, I'm always gonna be in Oakland, but I wanna, I, but I know I'm not losing because I'm doing the work. I'm putting out, I'm, I'm going every day and, you know, knocking on those doors and giving people my flyers. And I'm gonna continue to do that because I also wanna prove that you don't need a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to run this district. Your work should be able to speak for you. And.
It's not a very big district. It's only forty-five thousand people. And um, I I cut in because we're gonna, we're gonna wrap it up. So what I would say, the most profound thing that you said, and this was to me an excellent interview, I can't wait for people to see it, is that the order of operation for an elected official, and I'm paraphrasing with my own words here, is to get the issues from the people, talk to the people and figure out the issues they want and then advocate for those issues. And by people, you mean business owners. And I also think it's very important that you added small housing providers into the business community because they are also small businesses, uh, and they are under a significant amount of duress right now. And so.
Yep.
Um, this has been great. Go, go ahead. Got one more minute, wrap it up. Yeah.
Yeah, let me touch on uh housing particularly. For me, small landlord need to be taken care of. When we're talking about rents, uh renters, we need to be talking about small landlord again. We have to understand that there need to be a playing field and a, and a skill that everybody feel hurt. Because right now, we're painting landlords, small or big, we're painting them like they're bad people. I'm saying, no. We need to be able to subsidize for small landlords in particular. So I'm releasing my, you know, I've had my, I have my plan around that. So I'm gonna be releasing it, uh, uh, which I've released some of them, but a comprehensive one is coming out in in by the end of this week.
Awesome. Well, hey, I wish we had more time. Maybe we'll have a another interview if we manage to pull this off and and bring the victory home.
Pull it off.
Uh, they, I lo- I love the confidence and I'm seeing it displayed by people who are are buying in and like I said, putting up their stuff and and probably saying that they're voting for you for the first spot in a district where eighty percent of our business tax revenue comes from District Three. I think that it's very important that the person who's from here has at least some sort of business acumen, if not uh, a business background. And so hopefully that separates you from the other candidates. And again, I really appreciate you coming on, giving us your time today. I know you're really busy, you know, running a thousand businesses, running for office. You got children too. Man, you are a busy guy and I bet you do cook every day. You probably cook too. But time management is extremely, extremely, all jokes aside, that means you have to have time management. And you have to be able to prioritize and delegate. And all of those are very, very important tricks and and skills that we need uh in this position right now. So thank you, Baba. Peace, brother.
Thank you.
Thanks Oakland for watching. Make sure you vote, make sure you rank choice vote, vote and don't mess that up. And if you have questions on rank choice voting, ask people. Don't just be filling it out and making no mistakes because we cannot have that happen again. I love you all. Peace again. Have a good day. I'll talk to you soon. I have it sound for you today, brother.
No doubt. Thank you.
All right, peace.